Wait.
Uh, well, I'm actually, our consultant isn't here yet.
Oh.
Unrecord Dave, please.
Karen, I guess you could walk through the things you all prepped.
We can wait another minute or two.
Call it session, get going and then let staff.
I should do that. Otherwise, I'll never be able to read the screen.
I can't read the screen. Yeah, that's a good point.
I think so.
Evening. Like to call the order, the Woodland Park Planning Commission for Thursday, July 25th. Roll call, please.
Vice Chair Brown.
Here.
Don DeZellum.
Present.
Jared Newcomb.
Here.
We can hear you tonight, Jared. That's great. Absent are Ken Kennedy, Larry Larson, Cole Middleton, and then also in attendance, we have Board of Adjustment members Valerie Lundey and Jim Rumsey, Dave Burgess in the back, and then our consultant Jen Gardner is also in on Zoom.
For the record, Ken Hart.
Sorry. We did that last time.
Yes.
Apologies.
Please, George, ring in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, where it stands, one nation, under your power, individualism, liberty, and justice for all.
Well, on tonight's agenda, we have a work session for the code review project for review and discussion. And we'll let staff give us an introduction.
Sure. As you guys are all aware, we have been going through, we've got a total of seven chapters to get through for restructuring our subdivision and zoning regulations into a unified development code. And we have gotten through six of those. And within those chapters, we were really reviewing existing language, placing it in a more logical location, vetting it for just what does it mean as a contemporary definition? You know, looking at a variety of factors around all of that. And we have saved the best for last. The administration chapter or applications and procedures. And this is, this has been a really challenging chapter and it's taken, well, as long as we've been working on this, it's been like in the back of my head pondering, what are we going to do with this? Because right now, the analogy I used is process is sprinkled like pepper flakes in a bowl of mac and cheese throughout our entire set of regulations. That it really is just everywhere. In fact, I had CJ go through both seven, Title 17 and 18, the subdivision and zoning regulations, and identify sections that contained process. And he made a list for me and in Title 17, which is subdivision, there are 23 separate locations that he identified that contained some type of process, whether it's mailing requirements, posting requirements, routing requirements, hearing requirements, you know, just somehow that the this how we we process an application. So in 17 alone, there are 23 instances he's identified. And then in Title 18, the one with it addresses zoning, this is where we have our regulations around conditional use permits, site plan reviews, temporary use permits, those kind of things. He found 26 instances of where there is process. A board of adjustment is also within Title 18. So there's a variety of things in many, many locations in our current regulations. And so when we look at those, there's, there's a lot of duplicative language around certain things like providing mailed notice, posting of the property in advance of a hearing, what gets published in the paper. Those are very, very common things that are consistent to all applications. What may vary is this application, we only do a sign on the property and notice to surrounding property owners or these application types do all three. There is a little variability there, but the bottom line is notice consists of certain points, who, what, when, where? So what board is hearing the item? Where is the hearing located? What is the scope of the request? What is the location of the property? You know, there's some basic things to any land use application that gets reviewed. So we really don't need, you know, even six or seven different locations in the code that address this. These can be distilled down into one central point. And that's one of the things we're looking at with this, this chapter six. And it took me a long time to get there because we've been really trying to honor existing language and what's there and just restructure things. But chapter six is the chapter that really does need to be rewritten. And when you look at it from that standpoint of consolidating common things to all application types, putting it in a central location, this is what needs to happen with this chapter. So tonight, wanted to just really talk about this a little bit more and get everybody's buy-in before Jen and I spend a lot of time working down that particular path and approach, but want to make sure everyone's comfortable that that's where we're headed. So in your packet for this meeting, we had given you two, two documents. One is an application procedures table, table, which was a very much a draft where we went through and looked at all our different application types. And what are the notice windows required around the different types of notice? And so you can see the variability that we have in there. And then the adjustments or suggestions that we as a staff and consultant have to kind of streamline that a little bit more. Just to to make it easier for for staff to administer this as opposed to the conversations about, well, this one was this. Well, wait, we need to do this one this way. It's like just transparency, notice, clear, simple, straightforward would make staff's life easier if you're at all concerned with that. And then the other document we had in the packet was a very, very initial, very rough, more just category identification for what we would do within this chapter six. So that's, that's what was was in your packet. It was just a very, very initial rough outline. I do expect these different categories for chapter six will get built out in more detail. I do expect very likely that the order of some of these things will change within the different subsections. But in terms of just an initial brain dump, where are we headed? This is what we wanted to get in front of you tonight and just get you all to onboard that, oh, God, yes, please rewrite all this. Please streamline it. And that's why we had also given you a link to the Green Mountain Falls, our neighbor's code. Because you guys have seen Andrew Baker, a different consultant who's helped us with some development review applications. His company is also doing work for Green Mountain Falls. So he's had opportunity to actually utilize their code. And he's saying that that's actually been quite functional from the the staff perspective. And it's very concise. It's very direct, easy to follow. So all the things that ideally, you know, we would, we would like to see. So. So with that, Jen and I didn't strategize too much about where to go this evening. I don't know if you want to add something, and I can see Valerie's going to want to talk, probably some of our other commissioners as well. So let's start with Jen and we'll.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're not, you're not on.
If you're talking, Jen, we can't.
No, I wasn't talking yet. I was waiting for a second there. Oh, giant head on your wall there. No, I, Karen, I think you covered it really well. I don't really have anything major to add other than, you know, in addition to Green Mountain Falls, there's a lot of codes that follow a very similar kind of organizational structure to what we're proposing. So I think this isn't really in keeping with best practices in the land use code world. And then Karen, did you want me to share the documents on screen as we talk through them?
Sure.
Which one did you want to start with? Application procedures or the noticing table?
Let's go with, yeah, the outline application.
All right. And I have been on the sidebar here adding in Larry Larson's comments. So.
Yeah, Larry sent us a three-page document. So a lot of you guys know that he was, or he is a retired planner, professional planner. So Larry's planning muscles are very much alive and well in terms of what he sent us. It's things that Jen and I were talking about and just hadn't gotten down on paper yet. So anyhow, with that.
Yeah. So Karen, do you want me to walk through kind of how we, what we've done here or? Okay. So what we've done is, as you can see on screen, I can make this a little bit bigger, too. Let's see, I probably can go a couple more. There we go. Can everyone see that? Okay. Alrighty, so as, as we have an outline, we have this general procedures kind of chapter at the beginning. Larry had actually made the point that we need to add an intent and purpose sections in here. He had suggested adding it before 6.01, but we can talk about it. It probably can just go under 6.01 general procedures, but we can talk about that. One of the primary pieces that we want to highlight in, in the beginning of this chapter is the duties of review and decision-making bodies. So that includes city council, planning commission, historic preservation commission, board of adjustment, planning director and city engineer. And then Larry also has suggested adding the parks recreation and parks and recreation advisory board. And then we can talk about that. Do you want to stop and talk about that section? I mean, it's fairly straightforward, but does anyone have any questions, comments?
See, and this is very common to see in contemporary codes. And this is where, you know, as much as identifies the planning director, it's like, well, what about the rest of the staff? That's where the, the language typically says planning director or designate, you know, that it really does encompass the entire staff in terms of our ability to administer, make decisions around the code.
Yeah. Good point, Karen. We'll, we'll talk about designees for the planning director and then Karen and I have been talking about who reviews floodplain applications. Sometimes it's the engineer, sometimes it's the planning director. So in, in the Woodland Parks case, I believe that starts with Karen. So we'll put that as one of her duties that she can obviously delegate out as needed. So any questions about Karen? Do you want to get any feedback on adding the Parks and Rec Advisory Board per Larry's comment? I mean, I think that's.
Yeah, we, I think so. We just hadn't, Jen and I haven't dove into that too much. You guys are very aware that that's currently a buried sub-process in our code, you know, around subdivisions. Sometimes I found the language where like certain multifamily developments, they're supposed to be, when it's a zone change, get routed to, to Prab.
Yeah, I mean, they do have an official role, so I think it's.
Yeah. It likely will show up in there just to to capture how they fit in with this code. Some of these other sections, like specifically Historic Preservation Commission, most of the language around that particular board is in Title II. So we're likely just going to reference back to Title II, but acknowledge that they do have some, some review duties, but you know, that are spelled out within that particular title.
Question, Karen.
Uh, yes, Valerie.
The planning director and city engineer don't appear in the review procedure summary at all. Are they supposed to?
We're not that far yet.
Okay.
And it may not be the individual called out specifically, but it, because this is a work in progress, too, but some things don't involve a public hearing, but they have an administrative approval. So that typically falls at a staff level, which is more often than not, the, within the planning department, the engineer provides supportive review around the technical aspects of developments.
I think it might be worth considering, even if it's not an action, you know, because you have a, a review and recommendation, review and decision, appeal, all, but if you could come up with another kind of title for those, so they could be included, I think it would be helpful.
Yeah, this is why this is a draft.
Oh, I'm not.
You're totally tracking. You're, you're dead on right. Jen is, I'm sure, seen and heard that kind of comment and feedback before. Yeah. So thank you.
Absolutely. Yeah. And Val, I wanted to point out the, the table that you see here, this is just a snapshot from another code. It's not from yours. It's not the one that we're exact, I mean, we're modeling it after this, but in this particular case, director, and this is from the state's proposed model code, but in this case, director would be like the planning director. And then the different entities. So they just have kind of mapped out a few different entities. We'll, we'll customize this to Woodland Park for sure.
Okay, okay.
But it'll be similar. We just wanted to show you kind of an example that you'd have application types. You'd have the review authorities across the top. And then down in the columns, you can have who does review, decision. Obviously, Board of Adjustment typically does appeals and a lot of other, or appeals and yeah, mostly appeals in most communities. But and then as we go down in the outline and you have the different application procedure sections, we can, we can reference those and have a link to them as well. So.
I love the construct. And if you remember my comments from two weeks ago, they were almost all around. Where does the buck stop? And this makes it crystal perfectly. I love it.
Yeah. Yeah, no, right now it's, it's Dave's favorite thing, I think, is when people are in his office going, where is it written? You know, so this is a giant leap forward towards this is how this process works. This is who reviews it. This is who decides it. You don't like the decision? This is who you can appeal to. You know, so that's, that's really the, the, the goals here for assisting folks.
Awesome. So any questions on that? I guess I kind of got ahead of myself. Val, you queued me up for, for introducing this, but yeah, the next section will be this table. And kind of the way that this all flows, which is nice, is you establish those review authorities and kind of what their authority is. And then you go down and say, okay, now here's what their authority is on each application type. And obviously this will be a multi-page table because you have a lot of applications, which is not unusual. And then following that, we'll have a series, a section that'll have a series of all of our common review procedures. So when you come in, you know, from the beginning of an application, a pre-application conference, what that entails, applications middle and processing, what that generally entails, staff review, public noticing, review and decision, post decision actions. And the nice thing about this is then in each of these application types down in section 6.03, you're not repeating over and over and over again, okay, here's what we do at a pre-application conference and here's how that review process goes. You've kind of set that foundation up at the, at the top of kind of the general procedures that are applicable to all applications or generally all applications. And then down in this, this section in 6.03, say the subdivision section, you can talk a little bit more about the details of the steps. Anything that's not in, in alignment with that specific review, common review procedures, and then also have your review criteria. So and I think that a lot of codes do it this way. It cuts out a lot of repetition. So, so you're not, you know, if you change it in one section and forget to change it in another, you, you don't have that problem down the road. So that's, that's really kind of the way the rest of this is laid out. We provided a, a handful of procedures. This is not an exhaustive list. Karen and I will continue to work on this list and get all of your applications in. We wanted to kind of get a start on that and most of Larry's comments are all the additional applications that he thinks we need to add. So.
You think there's the opportunity to shorten this list by making more things follow the common process?
You'd still want to list it here because you're going to want your review criteria listed in there, but it can be a very short section. It could be a half-page section where you just say special use permit, follow the exact common review procedures, step one through eight. Here's your review criteria. And if there's any, anything different in the post-approval, you know, if it's recorded or not, just kind of how that, how that plays out.
Okay. Thanks.
But it does shorten the code in the respect that you're not repeating all of that. You know, a lot of codes, older codes have, you know, will you special use permit as an example? Again, it'll be two or three pages of procedure that's really repetitive to some of the other applications where you could simplify by just doing those common review procedures.
One other place where I think we can potentially consolidate things is right now we treat extensions of preliminary flats versus conditional use permits versus special use permits versus PUD plans. You know, they're, they're all considered very distinct things. They have different review time period or renewal time periods. That, that's a larger, when we pull that together, that's a larger question we're going to have, have for you all, that is there an opportunity to pretty much consolidate that into one? So it's extensions of, you know, prior approvals. And, you know, what is that extension period? Should it be discretionary or do we just go with two years? So that's maybe some of the, the things to, to think about a little bit procedurally or timing wise around what we do. Because planning commission especially sees that where this one gets reviewed or extended for one year, this one gets extended for two years. So you're like, got it in front of you quite often and leapfrogging. And sometimes it's both. Sometimes it's one and it's.
So it may sound like the long way around the block, but we haven't gotten to it yet, but where you show the, the table for the application procedures, the timelines. I guess what I'd recommend do is build that full spreadsheet of all the procedures, all the timelines, and then start looking at and go, okay, there's this group are very similar. Why don't we make them all the same? And this group are unique. Let's wedge those out and make those at least similar within theirs. And I think it'd be, it'll, I think it'll almost just hit you, hit us in the face when we see the, the degree of commonality and where we can streamline.
Yeah. The other thing we have going on, you've heard me talk about us working at a staff level to implement permit tracking software. And you guys are all incredibly intelligent, work in technical fields and have seen software. And it likes things that are consistent and repetitive. And our regulations are not. So one of the things we had to do was put together what they call a process map for that software in terms of how we process something. And doing that at a similar time to looking at this particular chapter, it's part of the reason I'm probably so stressed and like, like losing it most days was it, it does make your head explode around, okay, this one goes here, here, here. This is noticed for this long. That one's this one. And it, and it was just like, oh, my gosh, this, 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 this gotta be better. So when you, when you dive into that level of the weeds and try and put it into a very regimented system, that's where you really start to see things that are troublesome and problematic. So that's, I think, because I was working then on, on that at the same time I was, you know, pondering this, that we were able to get to the point where I'm not, we got, we, we just got to start over.
Just one, one comment, only just based on something you said, and it wasn't applied to anything in specific. Whether it's some renewals or whatever had to be, if it was possible for it to be discretionary, I don't think there should be anything that's discretionary.
Well, I meant in terms of the commission advising council, whether it should be a one or a two-year renewal.
Okay, not, not whether you could do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that's just, it's got nightmare written all over it.
Yeah, no, well, there is the question of should we grant an extension? That's always on the table.
Sure.
But then right now it's scripted that it's one-year extensions or two-year, depending upon what it is.
That's what I, I thought it was something more.
Do we potentially just go two-year across the board? Or do, yeah, do you want some flexibility in there? So just something to ponder and your, your point is well taken that sometimes flexibility is not helpful.
You'd like to think it is, but it just doesn't always work out that way.
Okay, Jen.
Yeah, I wanted to add one more thing to the gentleman. I, I couldn't, I couldn't see who it was that was talking about grouping in the spreadsheets.
Don Point.
Don, thank you. That was a fantastic idea that kind of sparked a thought to me. In this, let's see. Probably be in the applications middle and processing section, we could divide that into like a type one, type two, type three kind of process, like sub, subcategories. I haven't talked to Karen about this yet, but I'm just floating it out there. And, and do exactly that. If we have, you know, a bunch of applications that all fall in kind of this process in this timeframe, we could call those all kind of a type one and know that they all have this kind of timeframe for review, staff review and, and everything. And then maybe there's another set that has kind of a different timeframe for that whole review process. And instead of having to spell that out in the specific applications, you could kind of capture that upfront and then down in the applications, say, follow the type one procedure under applications middle and processing or something like that. So just as a thought to chew on.
But like I said, Jen and I haven't had a chance to chat about some of this, but the other thought I had was is we categorize some of this. There's the things that involve land subdivision. There's other things that involve public hearings for permitting. And then there's other much more straightforward things like a single-family home that are administrative permitting that happens. So that gets into essentially what you're talking about, Jen, but said, we, Jen and I have not had a chance to dive into this much further than this, this needs to be very different. And like you said, just brainstorming with you this evening is helpful. And I don't want to leave Jared out online. So Jared, did you have anything you want to add?
Well, I would just say that being the newbie when it comes to reviewing code and everything, before I came onto the planning commission, I did go review and read through the old code and it was very repetitive and made my eyes cross sometimes trying to figure out where, where things were going. So I love the, the chart. I mean, that just the, the table that you were just looking at, the example table. I mean, that, I was looking at it first time through that that was actually, you know, for our code, but if it's, even if it's not, I mean, it's just very concise and that that helps a new person like me or somebody that's just going to the code, you know, to, to easily figure out what's going on and, and how to follow procedure. So, yeah.
And I appreciate your comment about your eyes crossed because the, the silly thought in my head was, yeah, after CJ got done with that list, I had to give him a couple of days off. So he's not even in the office right. Okay, Jen.
Okay, let's see. Do we need to go through the specific application procedures? Does everyone? I mean, Karen and I will continue to build this out with all the procedures we have. Doesn't anyone have any questions? I'll tell you, like subdivisions will have a couple of subsections where you have preliminary plat, final plat, sketch plan. PUD will be similar where there will be subsections of all the different steps. And like I said, this is probably not an exhaustive list yet. We're going to continue to build that out as we build this chapter out.
In, in my brain, when you group, when you go through it, and then you group the ones that are have very common, and then come back to us and say, hey, you know, these six things are almost all the same. Do we want to make them exactly the same and then collapse it? And then that's where, you know, I think that's, that's when you come to us and we, there might be a reason split one out and say, no, leave that one the way it is, or, or there's a good chance we're all going to go, yeah, make that happen.
With this particular chapter, since we're really starting almost fresh, and I think you're, you're going to see much more frequent and stronger just recommendations from staff that this, this will get the job done legally. It takes care of, because from my perspective as a planner, the big things are, is, like I said, that it goes into the notices. Like, what are you, what is somebody wanting to do? Is there, does it require public scrutiny and a recommendation or review by planning commission, decision by city council? Um is there, does it require public scrutiny and a recommendation or review by planning commission, decision by city council? Um and if so, that process is spelled out. Um you know, regardless of whether it's a conditional use permit or a zone change, there is a process to engage the the community around this topic. You know, through that, how do you get it into the public hearing process? It, so that's really the the bigger thing and that that doesn't need a lot of variability from one to the next. Cuz when you all run your public hearings, there's not a lot of variability. You know, it's, it's staff presentation, applicant presentation, public comments, questions for staff and the applicant. Applicant rebuttal and then you guys deliberate, make a recommendation or a decision. That is the formula for a public hearing. Yeah, it, you know, that's it. There's a lot that happens in terms of the the substance and the details in that hearing, but that's the formula that happens every time.
I will, I will say on the B O A part of it with, you know, with variance and appeal, cuz we went through that whole thing and spent a lot of time. With you involved too, when we were trying to get the dates right because. Of holidays and that stuff and how there were some bad things a couple of times. So I I'd like to make sure that we're consistent or with that.
Um I think you're talking about your rules of procedure. Um and this is where I, the, I I believe.
Well, it's the rules, but it, but if you have to have a posting, it with the number of days, I mean, that's my thing, it's like, I. I don't want it to go against this other stuff.
Well, and um highly confident the city attorney will tell us, it's what's in the code that dictates and governs. If a board has a set of rules or procedures, that's supplementary or additional information. But at the end of the day, it's what's in the code that's going to matter. And Jen and I have talked about making sure it's very clear in terms of how we compute time, is it business days, is it calendar days? That that will be, that we talked about making sure that's in here.
Well, yeah, but I, but just for, I mean, when we did that rules procedure, we did that and we did the other part, what was the other part? But we made sure they were consistent with the code stuff when we did it. That's the only reason I was, it's not, it, it wasn't a just, well, we just picked it out of the air thing.
Right, I hear you. Okay. I hear you, get it.
All right. Well, with that, do we want to switch over to the noticing table?
Well, hang on before we go. Six point oh three. Is there a particular order that these are listed in?
Right now, no.
Is there, will it be alphabetical or some?
I don't know, but it will, I I expect it to change.
Okay.
And I, I agree with you, you gotta be able to find it.
And then there's also a number of abbreviations, P U D, U D C, E R A B, those might want to be expanded to. Say, you know, land development, P U D or something like that, just so that.
Right.
Lay people and me too can know what we're talking about.
Yep.
Yeah, particularly since these get rolled up into a table of content, so you want to avoid abbreviations in titles.
Absolutely, and I will say, um you know, sometimes they're alphabetized, a lot of times what codes do is organize them by type. So you might have all of your app administrative procedures first alphabetized and then we might have.
Some order to it.
Yeah.
Looking at the list as it is now.
Perfect.
Yeah, I think this was the brain dump. Really, the reorganization, this was just a get it out for discussion.
This is the brainstorming part of it.
Yeah.
This was Jen and Karen putting it down saying, okay, we've, we've got to start, let's, let's see what they think.
And it's working because it's sparking discussion.
Thank you, Jen.
Absolutely. Anything else on the outline, any questions, thoughts? Concerns?
Lee, you're awfully quiet, you make me nervous.
I guess it's, it's too conceptual for me to reach a conclusion where I stand if.
Okay.
I saw these, if I saw these examples actually written out, I'm fairly confident I would have a view as to. Um whether grouping together made sense or not, whether it should be tried to be made in common with something else and such too is, but it's. I can't see taking a position without seeing what we're doing with it. So this was a Myers-Briggs test, yeah, I guess we didn't tell you that. I N T P. No, not an S. No, definitely not, engineers are the S's. Yeah, okay, I got, would've got that one wrong.
Okay.
You got next for us, Jen?
All right, how about the uh public noticing table? I'll make this a little bigger too. So what Karen and I started with is, um and this one is a more exhaustive list of all of your application procedures. Um as they sit right now in the code that have any kind of public notification. So we went through and um actually Karen did an awesome job, I just have to commend her, she. She brainstormed this all on her big whiteboard in her office and then we took it the next step to get it um put on paper. Um but looking at the subdivision sketch plan, preliminary plat, final plat. Um you know, sketch plan does not have any notification requirements cuz it's an administrative approval. Preliminary plat currently in your code states seven days um for publication. Ten days for signposting and ten days for adjacent property owner letter. And you'll see here for both preliminary and final plat, we're proposing um to change those to ten, every seven changes to ten. Pretty much everything we're proposing to change to ten days. And Karen might want to um expand upon that a little bit, some of it deals with um publication timeframes and how I think you have a weekly. Paper that we have to get publication in by a certain date, so.
Yeah, it's, a lot of it has to do with the timing of a weekly newspaper um that um we see, we can't do this without a calendar.
Need to notify the paper the Wednesday before publication.
The Tuesday before, so it's like over a week.
You got a Wednesday.
Yeah, no, it's over a week, so it's wrong, yeah. So right now, um but coming up, I would need to have something to the newspaper by noon on Tuesday the thirtieth. In order for it to be published on Wednesday, August seventh. It's just in order to meet the deadlines of the paper and stuff and.
And that just starts the ten day clock.
The publication date starts the ten day.
So August seventeenth or would be the, when it's, when this requirement has been met. In that, in your hypothetical, yeah, okay.
Yeah, um so actually, hang on a second. Back to my calendar, so if something is published on the seventh of August. Those meetings would either be um for like board of adjustment, it would be the nineteenth. Of August or planning commission, the twenty second of August. So um we're often hitting well in advance of the 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 ten days. Um and you know, as the seven seems like, oh, this is helpful, you don't have to get it there as fast. Um we're doing them all at the same time and that consistency would be helpful.
Yeah.
Um and the only time where we've got a date shrunk is because of how it's written. Um in the, in the code right now, that something needs to, I I can't, it's, 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 it's very different and um it it needs to be. Cleaned up so it's consistently, the notice is provided X number of days in advance of either the public hearing. Or if it's an administrative decision by staff.
So, so we meet on Thursdays, that's just the council, so. Seven days works really nice because it comes out on Wednesday, so you meet your seven days and you're ready for the next. Uh commissioner council meeting, you, or at least you've scratched this itch. So that might, might be a reason to use seven there, cuz you, that extra day causes you to lose a week, potentially.
We're doing it the other way right now. Uh longer.
Yeah, I was gonna say it.
Longer is always better.
Public, but I mean, these, these days, I, that was one of the things when I first looked at this thing earlier. Because it's, you know, the stuff says like, well, for the subdivisions, it, it, the old, the old stuff. Of a twenty one day public notice, fourteen days newspaper, site posting twenty one days. I mean, so there's a big difference between signposting for ten days and signposting for twenty one days. Just saying.
Yeah.
Ten, ten days means a two week vacation and you missed it.
It's um.
The other thing I wanted just for context is um in state statute. Uh it's very common to see that notice being fourteen or fifteen days. Um sometimes depending on the application, even twenty one days, I think that twenty one relates to something, I've got, I got. And I got like a county thing triggering in my head too, it might be county subdivision, state law, definitely zonings are longer. Annexations tend to have long timelines. Yeah, but yeah, but there are a whole other separate spot process where you gotta publish multiple times. So um. The, the ten day recommendation comes about by just looking at where is the bulk of our, our stuff happening now. Um what is staff effectively doing, we're hitting the ten days anyhow. Uh and then from uh just a workflow standpoint. Um if you're doing one, you might as well just handle them all of this, you know, the different types of notice on an application, just all at the same time, just, just knock it out. Check it off the to do list.
Yeah, my, my concern is it, in particular, one of the concerns, quite frankly, is like the site posting because, I mean, that's. For the people that would drive by them and and see them cuz they're affected by that area. You don't always see that stuff the, in that, that best, what if you, that's go, you know, not going in and out a bunch of times, I don't know. Um just, it, it seems like that needs to be up a little longer cuz most people don't read the courier either. I'm just saying, I.
Just something, there's an issue here, but I, I, I agree, I agree with you. People, no, not too many people find it in the courier. Basically for larger lot areas, it's the immediately adjacent ones, more than that, you'd be too far away. So it depends on the sign, there's not a sign popping up and then the neighbor saying, gee, I wonder how, what that, what the effect of that is.
Yeah.
And it takes some time for that to circulate a little bit, from the time the signs get up and the neighbors can call each other and talk about it.
Well, I, I just think we need to, that one, that one should, I think should have a little longer time, that's.
Okay, we. I noted that Valerie, thank you. And then to um everyone else's point about just kind of how word of notice gets around. Um this is why notice is done in more than one method. You know, that there, there is, you know, legally, it's, it's, the, the old school way is definitely run it in the paper. Um you'll see city council has modified all of their regulations, so um just notice on the city website covers that. Um not everybody goes to the time and trouble to look at the city website, so it's kind of the same thing as not everybody gets the paper. Um the, the sign posted on a property is one way of gathering attention. And then um those letters that get sent out to property owners, you know, within X radius of the, the perimeter, the lots. And every once in a while you guys will hear at a hearing that, well, I didn't get a letter. Um so sometimes the post office eats it, sometimes they didn't pay attention when it came through the mail. Uh sometimes they're just out, just outside that boundary of who did receive um notices. Uh and that's why it's very common to see language in the code to the effect of um. If somebody didn't receive the, the letter, that doesn't negate the proceedings. Cuz chances are they're standing here at the hearing telling you they didn't get the letter, so somehow they had notice of the meeting because they're here.
Yes, the um information that's put out in the courier end up on the city website for planning or. Just as an extra layer of notification?
Not on the front page like um the council notices of ordinances, uh it doesn't land there. Um we've been trying to use um and everybody hated the title, but I don't have a better one. Um a particular page under planning that says applications under review, so if it's one that um people have a, a pretty big interest in. Uh there's the ability, rather than come into our office and look at the file. Um there's the ability to, at your leisure at home, look through the, the aspects of the application. And then we've been also, you know, once the packet gets published, uh the agenda and the meeting packet. Uh to also update that part of our website um to include this, the staff report, you know, for the, the upcoming meeting. Um so those were steps that uh when I was working on workflows for all these different applications, we were trying to make sure that that was. You know, a box that you're ticking as part of tracking, you know, the, the application and making sure you're hitting all the benchmarks.
So whether it's seven, ten, fourteen, whatever, um I'll just give feedback, I. I love what you've done here, it's very clear, it's pointed out some. Pointlessly minor discrepancies that, so I, I support. Driving as much as feasible to a consistent set of timelines for virtually everything. Um which leads me to the question, to the two part question. Which of, how would we know which of these are dictated by? City ordinance, state statute, et cetera. And if they are, is that a max or a min, can we choose to be long, I guess we can't be less than. But, but if, if, say they said it must be seven, but we want to make everything ten.
So the, the, what's in our code would be a, it's always a minimum. So if you're, you get your stuff out the door, at least the ten days prior to the, the hearing or prior to the decision. Um because we're home rule, we have the ability to deviate from what's in statute. So that's why, as much as I brought up statute, that was just by example in terms of the, the state has generally set out. Um and we're already, you know, under that pretty consistently, so I'm, I'm not looking to, to shrink anything. You know, it really, anything, I've, I've expanded some things. Um and like I said, the one where I shrank it, um had to do with the condominium and townhome plat. Um and I can't remember how that was worded, Jen, um it was, it was something.
Yeah, I just had that open, let me see, I can scooch back to it. Condominium and townhome plat, notice, it was really weird. Um when applicant fully complies with sections X, Y, and Z. The city shall give notice within seven days of receipt of complete application that a subdivision application for condominium or townhome plat. Townhouse plat has been filed. The notice shall be mailed, let's see. Then the parcel that is subject of the application shall be posted with a notice for no less than fifteen days, and that was one of the. Few that had, I think that was the only one that had fifteen days. Other than historic landmark designation, all the others were either seven or ten. And then the notices shall be mailed and post, notices to be mailed and posted shall contain all the necessary information. So I don't remember if there was another piece to that.
So it sounds like it's within our discretion, so I would advocate for as much commonality as reasonable. Some minor deviations for some particular cases, otherwise it's ten days across the board.
Yeah.
Especially when. You have to do all three of these things and if any one of them takes ten days, then you might as well take ten days further. Yeah. Did notice uh floodplain permit, historic landmark have seven days in the publication period?
Yes, uh let's talk about those slightly differently, um historic landmark. Um that's one where those timeframes are set out actually in title two. Um since that's where all the stuff related to the historic preservation committee is, in fact, their process around how their stuff is. Even though they conduct the hearing the same way you guys do, um it's, it's some slight deviations in there in terms of. If the property owner is requesting historic landmark designation versus if Valerie is requesting designation for Jim's property.
Okay.
Yeah, you can apply for your neighbor's property, but. We as staff have to do slightly different notifications to make sure the property owner knows that this has been submitted, you know, so it's.
So it's a check title too, so it's outside kind of.
Yeah, it is outside there, uh floodplain permits. I have never seen them go to a board for decision before I came to Woodland Park. Does they, anyplace else I have worked, they are administratively handled at a staff level. Does they, anyplace else I have worked, they are administratively handled at a staff level. Are you guys able to tell me why it's set up as a public hearing item here?
I don't, I, yeah, I don't, I remember there was. We saw one.
For a floodplain flood hazard permit or a variance? Oh, uh, you'd be, it would have been a variance, yeah. Yeah, BOA hears variances or uh, appeals of staff decisions. Um, and what did you say that who would know, Don?
Larry might know why.
Okay. I'll try and follow up with him, thank you for that.
Or maybe Sally's.
Trying to let Sally retire. Um, I do occasionally, I do, I do talk to her, but everyone, and everyone's will ask a question, but.
Those townhomes, they're putting the townhomes across from the school.
Yeah, but um, like you said, I've never, never seen them subject to um, approval by a board. Um, you know, appeals to the Board of Adjustment, but never to get the flood hazard development permit, that's always been administrative. So, just don't know if you wanna keep it that way, or if you wanna recommend that perhaps that should be administrative.
Presence also creates a little bit of a fuzzy asymmetry. Planning, Planning Commission is advisory board, make recommendations to the council for things generally.
Except.
Flood, floodplain, we actually make a decision.
I know.
Good point.
They shouldn't say asymmetry is necessarily bad, but we should wonder.
But once again, you build these tables and so you just jump out and you're like, whoa, that doesn't make, or that seems weird. So, yeah.
Well, sometimes it is that way for a reason, but I just, like I said, I've never seen flood hazard development permits require a public hearing.
And sometimes that way just because.
It's a feature of Woodland Park.
Well, it is, you know, all these were built over decades.
Thank you, history.
Well, I still go back to, I, I do firmly recognize and respect that what our code says now, we did not get there by accident. There were things that would happen or issues that were there that were trying to be addressed, so it's not accidental.
But we also did not get there by design. It's somewhere in the middle.
So this, this is an opportunity to, to reflect on, you know, what's working, how well is it working? Do we really still need to do it that way? How do we still meet these intents of, you know, notice, when do we wanna engage? When should the public be discussing an item? Should it be when somebody wants to put a house on their property's own for that? Yeah, probably not. Nobody's going, yeah, Karen, let's do that. You know, um, so it's, it really is that, that balance around what needs additional review and scrutiny. And there's a number of things that absolutely need it versus, you know, applications that don't. So this is the opportunity that where you look at, at things and go, well, we've been doing it that way, but um, we don't need to. When um, in general confirm this, a lot of times when uh, uh, a consulting company is looking at a city's um, code to make recommendations about what should be revised, one of the first places the consultants like to look is what variances do you grant consistently?
We're not consistent.
But um, you know, other places I've worked, it was very, there were things that were very consistent. Every single time this showed up, this was, at least the boards would say yes to it. So, do you really need to put people through that process, or do you just rewrite the regulations? So that if you meet this, this, and this, you get it. You know, um, so that's a very common way to, to clean things up when you're doing this type of analysis and review.
I'll honestly say that any time, since I've been on ones where we've done, you know, made a, made a decision, I never felt that it was not needed, that, if that makes sense to, to have done the review. I've, I never had that feeling. I didn't feel like I was wasting my time.
Okay.
So.
Well, and it also completely supports your comment about the application types are not consistent in terms of what you see. You know, it's not like you do fourteen, you know, side setback variances every year. You know, they're, they're definitely not as frequent, they're, they're definitely unique. Yeah.
So Jen hinted, hinted at it, but do we wanna discuss how we measure time? What counts as a day? Is it weekend or the holiday?
Did we do that, something in definitions?
I can't remember, it might be in definitions. And, or earlier in the regs, I, I, or generally, I, I believe we have touched on it before. I don't remember what the code says. I don't think we tweaked it much. Um, that we just, I mean, if I had to pick, I would go.
Funny time, you look through and say, if, if it, first off, if it ends on a weekend or a holiday, go to the next year that. If it's less than ten days, count business days, and it's more than that, count calendar days. I mean, something like that. Isn't that usual?
Well, uh, to, it, from the standpoint of streamlining, um, now a times, now, nowadays, a lot of times it's calendar days. They might do a longer, they might say fifteen days, but it's calendar days. And then, of course, if you land on a weekend, it's the, the next, you know. Isn't, definitions, okay.
It, we actually added a definition in the revised draft that we were discussing. It says days when used to establish timelines or constraints of actions refers to calendar days, except when specifically cited as working days. When a time limit or constraint in terms of calendar days falls on a Saturday, Sunday, city or state holiday, the constraint will be extended to the nearest following day that is a non-holiday weekday. So I think that gets at everything you guys were just saying.
So it can start any day, but it can only end on a working day, is it?
Add the Fourth of July in there, you couldn't count that as one of your days.
It sounds like you could, as long as it wasn't the last day. Anyway, as long as it's, it's visually clear, I, I'm not challenging it, I just wanna make sure it was.
That's probably, something like that's probably okay.
Yeah.
Well, and just so you guys know, at a staff level, when we're doing these things, um, it always makes us nervous when we're, we're close, when we're like on the line of something and it's in question. We're definitely comfortable with a cushion or more days than the, the, the minimum that's ever spelled out. Um, just, be, just, it, it's, what does it hurt? You know, it's about providing that ample opportunity.
What else did you have for our discussion tonight, Jen?
That was it. So if there's any, I mean, we can, we can sit on this table or the outline a little bit more if we need to. Um, otherwise, these were the two pieces that we wanted to get your feedback on, so we can finish building this chapter out in full.
And you will probably see it in sections, um, just as we I have opportunity to have the work session, so I don't see us giving you the whole chapter holistically, so just bear with us. I promise it'll come together. Um, and I think the big thing, the big objective for tonight was just that um, consensus and it seems like you guys are reasonably comfortable with the direction that we want to go. Um, so that was important to us, Valerie.
Well, I did read, cause you had attached that Green Mountain Falls thing, and it, it was, for me, it was not helpful because um, they had things that we don't have and all the numbers, it's just, I gave up. Okay, and I don't give up that easy. Um, I'm not, it, it's not, I'm not saying that it's not something that you use, but it, it needs to be more like, okay, this is what we have.
I looked at it as a good wit, I mean, reading it, if I wasn't from Green Mountain Falls or something, I could look and see the process.
Yeah.
Um, so I didn't try to apply it to what we had in Woodland Park. I was just looking at it as far as if I knew nothing and I was to read that, would I understand it?
Yeah.
And I found that, the way that theirs is laid out and stuff, very, very well laid out as far as understanding and finding things. So.
Yeah, that's definitely for, for me, the newbie, like, oh, that one looks a lot cleaner, I like that.
Well, and the whole idea of doing a lot of this process was to make it easier for people to understand the process. So if we, I mean, what I'm seeing here goes a long ways towards that. Cleaning it up and making it so that, you know, anybody can look at it and understand it.
One of the, the conversations I've had internally at a staff level, and it's a, a, a benchmark for me that um, is very important is um, if I cannot explain something to the developer or the citizen, holy crap, we have a problem.
Yep.
Because, you know, I've been doing this for a couple decades now, and if I can't explain what's going on, that, that's a big problem.
Yeah, if the expert can't explain it.
Yeah, that's, uh, no, yeah, that's, no good comes from that, so. So yeah, that's um, really all we had was um, making sure you guys were, were reasonably comfortable with the direction we're headed. Um, I appreciate your patience as we um, drill into different sections of this um, and, and work on that structure and come up with something that is um, hopefully very logical and straightforward. Uh, there would be points where we're asking you guys for um, potentially uh, policy recommendations around if you do wanna change how something gets processed. Um, or who does the review and decision? Um, it doesn't mean it gets approved that way, but uh, it's really worth, you know, okay, with this, this, we should recommend this. Um, cause this is, this is the part that's probably the most problematic, it's just the process. And I think what the development community um, is most frustrated with, more than anything else, is like, how do, how do I get the darn permit?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, Ken's in the trenches in his workday, so yeah, that's why. You've heard that regularly, haven't you?
A few times, yeah.
Yeah. There's typically expletives involved.
Gotta avoid some of those, mind.
Yeah, absolutely. So. Um, anything from anybody else? Jim, you've been quiet.
Just listen. No, I've just been listening, um, I do more listening at times than I do. Um, so that if I do have input, I've got everything kind of. It's in my head, I've got it in departments, I can pull it out. Um, what I'm seeing is good, you know, I agree with the screen mountain falls when I looked at it, I'm going, some of this applies, some of it doesn't. You know, we, you know, for years, um, both BOA and Planning Commission, we have spent, and City Council, has spent a lot of time getting everything to come together. To read the same. And we've done a good job, um, as these, as each agency coming together as one, to get municipal code cleaned up. And getting our BOA, our OP cleaned up, um, and getting everything in agreement, and we're on the right path. We're on the right path.
Anyone have anything to add to the discussion?
Jared?
I'm good.
They're, just looking quickly, there's a potential disconnect with the working days and the definite working days as it refers to county days in general. And talks about like when the soil is not workable, I'm not sure if that's the working days we're talking about, cause for review, working days would be like when you're in the office.
No, that, 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 the excavation stuff, it's got its own little, little, where, whatever you wanna call it.
I would just recommend, just doing a crosswalk on that, cause there might be a disconnect.
Okay. And that may be one of the recommendations that comes back out of this. Yeah, we've looked at that definition before, um, but we don't, we don't like it. Maybe this does need to be further refined, you know, or in terms of how time is computated.
Cause I assume there are review timelines, which would be in staff working days, which have nothing to do with whether or not the soil's frozen.
Like I said, yeah, that, that, that one is just, it's just a whole, you go back to the.
I think we, I think we, my gut tells me use the term working days to mean two different things.
Yeah, then the excavation side, yes, it, it's its own little fiefdom.
Right.
I don't know what to call, what to call it.
Okay. I, I made a note of that, so um, I, I appreciate the, the comment.
Well, very good. Well, thank you, Jen, appreciate your input. Um, just nothing else on the uh, code review portion of the meeting. Takes us two reports, Karen, anything to share with us?
I think I did, now I forgot what it was, cause that was like a week and a half ago. I'm sorry.
Upcoming schedules?
Um, definitely work sessions, um, Jen and I need to do some serious cranking on things, but um, looking at a work session August eighth, and then August twenty-second, um, you do have a conditional use permit extension request and probably more work session that night, since it's just that one CUP extension. Um, and then early September, you may, you, you have at least one CUP extension. So not, not a heavy caseload for current development. Um, so there is opportunity here to, um, to, to at least chisel off pieces of this, this chapter six.
Are you too far reaching to look at what our schedule might be for completion of this work? Code review process?
I just keep chiseling as fast as I can, um. Um, you know, I, last time we met, I talked a little bit process-wise in terms of what I see happening. Um, that once we get um, through all of these chapters, it goes through a legal review with our city attorney. And then that's when we go out to a, a public um, uh, workshop or um, open house to, to get some initial feedback from the community as a whole in terms of what's being proposed. Um, those comments then um, get absorbed and um, possibly um, recommendations from the, the staff get revised, and then that's the, the document we bring forward to public hearing processes. So it's.
A few steps.
There, there are quite a few steps ahead. Um, I know um, council's somewhat impatient and wants us to move along. And um, we're working as fast as we can, given everything else that we need to be juggling, so. Um, at this point though, just the fact that we have good direction for Title Six, cause this was one that I was at a loss for, for a very long time in terms of what, what do we do? How do, how do we clean this up? So I appreciate you guys being game for what can we streamline, so thank you.
Any comments from the board? It's seven thirty-eight, meetings adjourned.